All right, it's six o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. We have a quorum. There's five out of six members here. Are there any additions or changes to the regular agenda?
No, no changes.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Oh, motion to approve agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, um, motion carries. The next number on the agenda is the October eighth, twenty twenty-four plan and zoning commission meeting minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review those?
Yes.
Any additions or corrections or motion?
I move to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number four on the agenda is the Oak Valley addition. Are we gonna do all of these together?
Uh, we're gonna do the, the first one separately, at least in terms of motion, we can open the hearing for all of them. But motion, because depending on what your recommendation is for the future land use map amendment will affect your recommendations for plat entries on the floor.
Okay, so the future, item number A is the future land use map amendment for Oak Valley addition, Jace.
All right. So in, in this one, the applicant is requesting a future land use map amendment for the Oak Valley addition. The applicant is proposing to adjust the suburban designation on the future land use map to account for a compact residential or compact development within the, the future land use map designations, civic and commercial for that. The applicant, application itself is cohesive with several of policies within the comprehensive plan and far exceeds the minimum lot size requirements for the compact residential zoning district. However, the city decision makers will first need to determine whether to amend the future land use map to accommodate the proposed development. In order for the city to proceed with a future land use map amendment, the decision makers of the city need to find that the following criteria are present, which are the amendment to the future land use map is consistent with the overall vision and goals of the master plan. The amendment of the future land use map would not facilitate a rezoning that places unreasonably high burden on public infrastructure. The amendment of the future land use map is generally compatible with planned uses on the surrounding property. And changes in circumstances since the adoption of the future land use map necessitate a change to the map. That is, I guess, in a nutshell, what I have for the future land use map portion of this. It is a request to remove the suburban designation and swap in designations that are cohesive with rezoning requests, which are compact development, commercial, and civic or public. On that, so I don't know if you want to go through the rest of the application and open the public hearing for the entire entirety of the application? And then we just separate our motions at the end? Based off that, we can sure do that, and I can keep going on to this. You know, if Lucas has any preference or...
Or does it make more sense just to act on the future land use amendment and send that to city council and have the rezon that come back, because if they don't approve the future land uses?
We'd be providing us a recommendation as a whole. I mean, even if you recommend denial of a future land use map amendment, city council would still recommend approval, and then we would be right in the exact same scenario. So I think they can both be done tonight. I just need that one done in terms of your motion before the others.
How does everyone feel about that? Do you want to do them at the same time, or do the future land use something separate?
You can do them at the same time.
Same time?
Okay. All right, we'll continue on that. The proposed development features eighty-two single-family home lots ranging from fifty-five feet wide to, or fifty-five feet wide and seventy-one hundred square feet at the minimum to one hundred and twenty-six feet wide and ten thousand seven hundred and twelve square feet at the maximum. Overall, the average lot size of developments approximately eight thousand two hundred and forty-four square feet per gross acre, which includes the entire development area, the development proposes approximately one point six seven units per acre. However, per net acre, which is often just the residential lots excluding non-residential lots, park space, and road right-of-way, the development sits around five units per acre. Horace City Code requires developments under the compact residential zoning district to hit an average of forty-eight feet for lot widths within the development. The proposed development sits around fifty-seven feet for the average lot width throughout the entirety of the development. Lot one, block two, and lot one, block, or sorry, I have that listed twice. My apologies on that. Let me correct that before we move on. Sorry, lot one, block two, and lot one, block one are currently proposed to be rezoned commercial. One hundredth Avenue or County Road fourteen is currently designated as a mixed-use arterial that can be expected to experience elevated volumes and traffic flows development around the metro and the surrounding cities continue to boom. Additionally, it should be noted that the county is currently exploring through a feasibility study a future highway bypass slash ring route, which is listed now as alternative three. There's two other alternatives that they're exploring before County Road fourteen. But while the, the city staff has provided objection as part of the study review committee in County Road fourteen, it's still listed as an alignment that is included in that study. Residential development directly along County Road fourteen may not be in the best economic interest of the city long-term. Additionally, the commercial zoning district would be consistent with existing commercial zoning districts to the northwest of the property of the proposed development and help buffer the existing use of that property. The newly adopted land use ordinance details out a set of criteria for decision makers of the city to consider before approving or denying a rezone application. The applicant's provided a narrative response to those thirteen criteria. Following the review of those thirteen criteria, staff generally agrees with their statements provided. The Horace Park District met on September sixteen, twenty twenty-four to review the application and provide a recommendation for public land dedication. The Park District is requesting seven point seven five five acres of land dedication, which is shown on the plat as lot fourteen, block three. The dedication is in excess of the ten percent required. However, the park area will serve as a future regional park for the development and surrounding neighborhoods along the County Road fourteen corridor. Lastly, I would just point out in terms of outreach for this project, the applicant held a neighborhood meeting on October second, twenty twenty-four from the surrounding neighborhoods. Myself, the mayor, and council member Berklin were present at that meeting, and I'll let the applicant kind of provide a summary of how that meeting went. In terms of motions coming up, the future land use map amendment is a decision of decision makers of, of the city. So the motion for that is a recommendation of approval, conditional approval or denial of the future land use map amendment to the city council. If there's any parts, portions of that you wish to change or, or modify within the staff report, those need to be specified. And then contingent on the future land use map amendment being approved, city staff hereby recommends the planning and zoning commission recommend approval of the subdivision and rezone application for Oak Valley addition, subject to the following conditions of approval, which is just prior to the hearing with city council, the applicant shall enter into a development agreement with Cass Rural Water Users District. So that is what I have for all of those. Like I said, if you want to open the public hearing for all of them, just to hear from the applicant and testimony from people that are present, and then separate motions that would be appropriate in this case.
Okay. We will open the public hearing for the future land use map amendment for Oak Valley addition, the rezone for Oak Valley addition, and the plat for Oak Valley addition.
Commissioners, my name's John Yunus with Eagle Ridge Development. We own this property along with another forty acres, in total making roughly two hundred acres on the south side of One Hundredth Avenue. To Jace's point, we, we did have a neighborhood meeting. It's the second neighborhood meeting that we've had. The first one was probably about eight months ago, and when we were going through the access approval with the county. And then this last meeting we had focused more on the final plan. So the first one was to get approval from the county for access on One Hundredth Avenue, since it's a county-controlled road. The second one was to more in-depth talk about our development plans. Overall, I felt like the meeting went very well. A lot of the focus was actually on the park that we're proposing for the site. The seven and a half, seven point seven five acre park is gonna be a regional park. The Maple Lakes neighborhood immediately adjacent does not have any park facilities associated with it. And we feel whenever we do these types of developments, large master plan developments, we try to get the park facilities in as soon as possible, knowing that the, the first residents that move out there also wanna be able to utilize those as soon as possible, and it generally works out pretty well. Seven and a half acres, seven point seven five acres is, is fairly large in size. We did want a very similar in the Wilds in West Fargo on the south side of Fifty-Second Avenue. I anticipate that there's gonna be a large feature playground facility for the young families to be able to utilize in this area again, because there's, there really isn't anything in the area for, for the residents. Then the, the rest of the discussions was just on the, the style and quality of homes that are gonna be there. You know, while we are asking for compact residential, we're, we are drastically exceeding the minimums on it, and we've taken into account the new land development code and side yard setbacks, and feel that this lot width is nice because it gives us the opportunity for a variety of different house styles. You can still have a three-story garage and have a nice rambler plan. You can do a two-story plan as well, and it's not gonna feel too tight. As for the commercial lots in front, as Jace mentioned, there was, there's discussion about One Hundredth Avenue becoming some more of like a collector that kind of runs around the city. We feel that that, you know, we, we tend to agree with Jace on that one, and you'll notice that the first homes are, they're gonna be well over three hundred feet or over a full football field away from One Hundredth Avenue, so it does provide some opportunities. We don't have any plans right now for the commercial property on One Hundredth. We literally are, are plating the lots, and, and they're, they're gonna be sitting there until we basically build through the development. Again, we've had neighborhood meetings and, and, you know, there was some opposition on the front end with the access. I feel like we've, we've squared that away with our access permit, and, and I'm open for any questions you guys may have.
Commissioner Hoeller, if I may, on that, so we did receive a letter, it's in your packet, from Shane Smith, who's the son of Marie Smith, who owns the property directly west of this, and I, I sent you all an email earlier today regarding that. In his letter, he discusses, basically, and I can read it quick, so it says, please route this to the city council members, and I would like to include the following letter regarding Oak Valley subdivision to Chad Peterson, Chairman, Cass County Commissioners, from the May tenth, twenty twenty-four, in the city council meeting minutes of ten twenty-two, twenty-four. I believe that any new approach for the Oak Valley addition southwest of Horace off of One Hundredth Avenue South should follow Cass County highway guidelines and not making exceptions for the developer and prior city of Horace mistakes of allowing the developer east of Oak Valley to put an approach anywhere. Highway safety should be top priority, and certain looking forward as nearby farmland becomes residential properties, how traffic flow, traffic will flow. One thing to point out, the highway or County Road fourteen is a county roadway who has full jurisdiction of where access is located on that road. They approved the access location for this development. They also approved the access for Maple Lakes, so, which has been acknowledged through the, the one they made the decision on the June third, twenty twenty-four meeting. In your email, I did provide you guys a link to that video if you're interested in the conversation that occurred there. But I just wanted to point out that, A, we did get the letter, B, the access has been approved already, and C, the access for Maple Lakes was not an arbitrary decision by the city. It was permitted by the county.
Okay, I don't think the city really has much of a say, do you?
Not necessarily.
You know, one, one thing, I'm sorry to jump in, but if I can go up, I wanna point to just a couple of things, so you guys can understand why we landed the way we did on some, on certain things.
Talk loud, John, so I can get you on the...
Yep. So, Mr. NaSeF, one of the big discussion points when we were going through the access with the county was Mr. NaSeF and his existing use. So when we came through with our updated plan after the access was granted on One Hundredth Avenue, we tried to create a complimentary use adjacent to him and also provide him access within our development where he wasn't gonna have to give up any right-of-way in the future. And I feel like we were able to accomplish that. He gets to keep his access that he currently has on One Hundredth Avenue. We provide some opportunities to, to him on the south side of his property. If, for whatever reason, he decides to parcel that off and develop it in some other fashion, he's got another opportunity for access. The other thing that we wanted to take into account was the existing residents over here in Maple Lakes. You know, we tried to give them a nice buffer as well. We've got a, a pond connection that's gonna come over here to give them a buffer in their backyard, and we're also giving them, the park will be visible in their backyard. Rather than surrounding it with just our lots or surrounding parks with just our, our lots, we give them the ability and access to be able to get to it off of this collector road that runs north-south. And the other thing, as you, as you look at the next page, you know, we plotted a, a pond lot down here on the south, south of Hundred and Second Avenue, again, trying to create a buffer between the two neighborhoods to be able to get, you know, not, you know, with the collector road there, we wanted to have a nice aesthetic drive as you kind of went north-south through there to, to not put homes immediately adjacent to that. And again, on the lot sizing, I mean, fifty-five to seventy-foot lots on average is a good lot size and, and opens up a lot of flexibility in terms of the, the types of homes that can be built there.
Well, as far as park access, we're, we're, obviously, they're not gonna run through somebody's yard. Where, where do you anticipate park access for the people that live on, you know, Pine Oak Drive, so?
Pine Oak Drive.
Oh, I mean, yeah, that, good question. Yeah.
So, you know...
I, I see something that leads into like a, a sewer and drainage.
Yeah, so this is one of the, one of the conversations that came up during the neighborhood meeting was access to the park. A previous version of this, which you guys may or may not have seen, had more lots backing up to the park. What we ended up doing is creating a forty-foot wide gap between these lots and these lots, so that a trail system could come through here and link itself into this, into the neighborhood park. The other thing that's gonna happen is that with the collector road, there's gonna be a bike trail on one side of the road that, that will provide access all the way up to One Hundredth Avenue, along the park, and all the way down south, as it ultimately builds out.
Yeah, I saw that access, but then I saw the sewer thing there, and I thought...
Yeah, that's just, that, that storm sewer isn't, is just purely for rear yard drainage, so that they can put inlets back there, but there'll be a concrete trail that comes through here and ties into the rest of the park facility.
Okay.
So there's a bike trail on the right side of Seventy-Fourth Street South?
I don't know if it'll be on the, on the east or west side. We still have to work through the details with the engineering department or with, with interstate on that, on which side's gonna have the bike trail. There'll be a sidewalk on one side, and then a wider bike path on the other side.
And I think that's pretty typical for a residential collector road.
Is that normal to have a house sandwiched between the two roads?
Well, it, part of the challenge in locating that collector road was, you know, with the narrow width of the property. And ultimately, we went through a number of different iterations, and what ends up happening if you, if, if it were to slide over is that it ends up creating a weird gap where we'd need lots fronting on a collector, and right now, lots are not allowed to front on collector roads.
This might be a gym question, but I anticipate there'll probably be a four-way stop or some sort of control structure then on One Hundred and Second and Seventy-Fourth then, for traffic.
Do you want me to play gym?
Yeah, I want you to play gym.
That does make sense.
Okay, so you can play gym. Well, either that way, or there's gonna have to be other, some way to slow traffic down.
Yeah, though, there would be a stop. Well, I don't know about on Seventy-Fourth, but I know there'd definitely be stop signs on the, on the east-west portions of those roads.
Because don't they have some issues in Lost River with traffic and...
Adjacent to the park.
Adjacent to the park and slowing traffic down, so is that a concern with the collector that close to the park?
No, not particularly. I mean, Lost River might be...
I just don't wanna create the same issue we already have.
Right, and I think it would be appropriate, too, of, even as a condition of traffic calling measures to be incorporated in the civil plans along that area, just to avoid that situation. But it's hard to make that judgment on lines on paper, depending on what the Park District ends up doing with the overall park, how far back things are set off. I think part of the Lost River issue is you have houses that run all the way adjacent, so there is a natural kind of traffic flow that comes out of there, people backing out of the driveways, kids just running across the street to the park, where you don't really have the house situation directly crossing the road, but I, it wouldn't be out of line to request or ask as part of the conditions of consideration for traffic calling measures.
The commercial designation allows for gas stations, things of that sort. I'm just thinking if that loop, if that loop actually came to be, you know, the business loop through there, those types of establishments would be...
Potentially could be, yes.
And then between block five and block six, looks like there's a seventy, seventy-foot...
That's a road.
Yeah, that looks like there's a road heading south, Burr, Oak Drive.
Yep. And that'll continue down and eventually connect to One Hundred and Fourth Avenue. And as we work through future phases, there's some things down on One Hundred and Fourth Avenue that we're gonna have to take into consideration. I know that the lift station's currently in the right-of-way, and we certainly aren't gonna relocate a lift station, so there may be some minor adjustments that we have to make to some right-of-way down there to, to accommodate that. But we own the south side of One Hundred and Fourth as well, so we have that flexibility to be able to do that.
Sorry, go back to that same point again, I was thinking earlier, but I'm looking at like lot eighteen in the neighborhood to the east, so they're gonna basically have roads on the three sides of their lots. Is that, is that normal? Is that, I'm just trying to picture what that would be like for that...
So there are, there are situations like that around town. I know you can find it on Thirty-Sixth Avenue, which is residential collector in Fargo. So I mean, it, it, it does happen. But their driveway is already on the, on the east side, so, I mean, from an access standpoint, they're, they'd be using that, well, what's called West Loop Drive, but I think it's been renamed since then.
But you're right, as far as traffic and lights and everything else, it is kind of odd.
Yeah, you can see that also if you keep running up Ninth in West Fargo over by Aurora, there's similar situations like that.
Can we recommend barrier or fencing on a situation like that?
So I mean, we'll have to look at, so it's, it's a hundred feet of right-of-way, roughly. That's not all gonna be roadway, right? So there's gonna be buffering between that, or you have a sidewalk on one side, so you'll have additional green space that gets put in there.
Yeah. I guess I'd recommend the, the walkway to be on the east side in this instance to add some...
The shared use.
Yeah, yeah.
Push it on the east side, create a larger...
Well, I think that may make some sense as well, if you think about using that, you'd have less, there's, there's less breaks, less, less roadway connections over on that side as you kind of work your way north, so it makes for a less impeded pathway all the way up to One Hundredth. Plus, it kind of get...
And of course, you have people, kids having to cross the street to get to the park from the walkway.
Yeah, and, and I've seen, I mean, you, you go down residential collectors, and it's not uncommon to have multiple stop signs on residential collectors, and I could definitely see that being a, being the case, and we certainly aren't opposed to it. We'll defer to, to the engineering department on what they feel is justified in those areas.
Would it be better not to even have a sidewalk on that one side and just have it on the park side of the street, so people don't have to cross the street, kids aren't running across?
Just to create a bigger buffer.
Bigger buffer here for these...
I would still account for pedestrian access across both sides of the roadway, whether it's a shared use path or sidewalk through there, just for the complete road section to do that, provide safer travel on both sides, because you will have people that, depending on where that bike path connects on the south side, I mean, that could be a, a trafficked bike path that goes through there, especially if the version does have recreation components, it could tie south into that. Another thing we could potentially look at, and until you know what traffic flows are in, but whether it's rapid fashion beacons or like some safe crosswalks or stuff to allow for that safe pedestrian traffic across there, there's items that could be looked at on the engineering side for that, too.
So is that where the city originally proposed Seventy-Fourth Street to be?
So the south side of One Hundredth Avenue within our comprehensive plan was not addressed on there. So this is pushing that collector to the mid-mile, which best practices will suggest that's where here our collectors and artio should sit on the mile and mid-mile roads. That's where this one came in, but as far as pre-planned location for that, it was not addressed within the comprehensive plan transportation section.
You know, the other thing that this, just from the location standpoint, that this collector helps with on the Maple Lakes side is that it will help funnel traffic to that collector road as opposed to through the neighborhood and wrapping in front of all those driveways, so I think there are some advantages to having it there. It's definitely gonna be easier to, to get to One Hundredth Avenue on that collector road than it is driving past all, all those homes on West Loop Road and East Loop Road.
I'd be interested in seeing what the solution is, though, for those, those lots that are sandwiched between the, the two roads. There should be some, some sort of a boundary or, or a fence or something there to...
I mean, there's some things we can do from like an enhanced landscaping on the boulevard with trees and things. It's difficult to put on someone else's private property to, to do anything, but I think there's some, some things we can work through on that east side that may help add to that buffer. But this is not gonna be a large arterial road. I mean, our, and, and we've had conversations with engineering and, and planning on, you know, right sizing this to make sure that it doesn't feel like you've got a highway cutting through the neighborhood. We wanna have it more of a residential feel, which inherently will help keep the traffic speeds down.
Are there any residents that wanna speak?
Yeah, anything else you wanna add?
No, only if you have any additional questions.
Is there any residents that wanted to speak? You're welcome to come up. Just state your name and your address. Ask away.
Thank you, David Ritter. We live in Maple Lakes, seven three three one, One Hundred and First. Two question, well, one question, not necessarily about the development, but I was just wondering if the city has a plan on Highway one hundred in Cheyenne. I'm all for growth and growing the community and stuff, but the traffic, the, the four-way there, it gets pretty dangerous at times. So I was just wondering, with the growth, is there a plan to make that a little more controllable? I didn't know if that's been discussed at all, because...
No, it hasn't, and I have that same question.
Right, with, with both road...
I also live in that area.
Yeah, both roadways being county jurisdictions at this point. The, the conversation has been approached from city staff to the county, but there has not been a resolution at this point as far as what that intersection looks like long-term. I don't disagree with you. At some point, something's gonna have to happen to the intersection, whether it's signalized or...
Even a roundabout.
Even a roundabout or something to...
Safer, you know what I mean? Just something to slow things down and make it more...
Sometimes roundabout's a curse word, so I didn't wanna say that aloud.
Well, I agree. I don't like neither, but just something to make it a little more controllable, especially with more growth.
Right.
Then my other comment is, did you consider more pickleball courts in the park?
We, uh, so the, the only part of the park that's been programmed immediately right now, because of the financing side of it, is that we wanna get that playground structure in right away. We modeled the size of the, of the park area based on the Wilds Dakota Park, which has a warming hut, it has a ice hockey rink, and it has multiple pickle courts then that are used in the, during the summer. But ultimately, the, the trick is to be, how's it getting paid for? Who's paying for, you know, you know, what level of special assessments is happening? So those discussions are, as we get further down in the development, it becomes easier to afford additional amenities.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
But they have been discussed.
Everybody loves their pickleball.
I'm Sharon Arnold. I live at ninety-eight twenty-two Robin Road, which is just north of this, and I had a question about the pond. It says the city pond. Is that that little narrow area, or is it going to be larger than that?
John, you want to touch on the sizing of the pond?
Because, I mean, to me, that doesn't look like it's large enough to be deep enough to be a functional pond.
So, so it still needs to go through the entire design. What ultimately is probably gonna happen is there's gonna be a pond along here with a, a connecting channel that would go to the other pond here. Whether or not that channel ends up having water full, full-time or not is still to, to be determined. Still have to go through the design, but there will be a wet pond that sits right here in that area.
Right, so those contours that you're seeing on there, those narrow contours?
Yep.
Those are existing contours that are overlaid on a map. So if you, yeah, if he blows up there, you can see the designation of one and two. That area is where that pond and drainage structure is gonna be.
Okay, and then it will be a detention pond? What's the difference between a retention and a detention pond?
I think they tend to get used in... I think they tend to get used interchangeably.
One holds water all the time and one dries out.
Yeah, and, and so it could be.
That is the difference.
Retention pond generally retains water the entire time. There will be a wet, a wet pond on that, the southern portion of that. I, again, until the, the design happens, I couldn't tell you if it'll be able to continue all the way to the other one. My hunch is probably not. It'll probably be used just for conveyance and have kind of a natural kinda channel feel to it. But I hope that answered your question.
I have a problem with Maple Lakes' pond because they get their water and they dump it out like two days later, so it goes into the ditch along Hundredth Avenue. So rather than holding the water, it just holds it for twenty-four hours or so, and then they pump it out and then it floods the ditch. So I'm hoping that that's not something they're going to be doing with this pond also.
Sorry, but, oh, if the, actually, those detention ponds were sized for the north half of our property, but we recognize, A, we're, the, the need for some clay material, but also the aesthetic part of it. By adding that pond and by adding the pond in that lot that's further south, it should help alleviate the amount of storage that's needed on those Maple Lakes ponds and slow down, you know, the, the transmission from south to north before it hits the ditch. So it should.
They pump it out right away.
They pump it out right away.
That's a prob, it doesn't even hold it.
No, it doesn't even hold the water.
I mean, it actually goes all the way down to Hundredth and then backs up in front of my house, which is a half mile south on seventeen once it hits fourteen and Hundredth.
So to me, it's kind of a non-functioning pond because all it does is flood the ditch and then go up to country acres or back to the farm field if it's a heavy rain. So, I mean, that's my concern.
To support Sharon's point on the size of it, we have one pond right now that's famously not deep enough and, and people are complaining about it.
Well, and I don't want the city to pay five hundred thousand like they're planning on the other one to fix it.
Well, to fix it, just to fix it.
To hopefully fix it.
That's the one that's having.
It needs to be big enough so that it can be deep enough.
And this one, this, these would be designed, I, I think I have a, at least somewhat of an understanding on what happened on, on that pond. And these ones will be significantly larger than, than that one. So there, there should be additional volume that's sitting there.
And so then will the pumps work while you're, no one knows what it looks like. Okay, those.
But the idea is to create a, a chain of ponds, and that helps alleviate, you know, problems on just one pond because it allows the water to flow from, I'll call it the southern one to the next one to the next one, as opposed to all just sitting one at once, filling up and having to get pumped down right away.
We haven't had a problem lately because we haven't had much rain since we had the three inches in August. And with that, it was, it was flooding both the farm field and country acres, so.
The other thing that, the kinda chain of ponds that we're proposing along this development does is it helps keep the storm sewer infrastructure much smaller, so you don't have these big, large culverts that you have to go throughout the entire development. You use those ponds to, to move the water as opposed to a culprit or a pipe.
Jase, is there a way to have the county come and fix the flow of the ditches so water doesn't stand there?
I can look into it on that. I know there's, wouldn't be the first time they've received complaints of, and I know they've talked about recreating them. I just don't have a timeline of one that is occurring or if that actually will be occurring.
Cause even the whole way along country, like now, since they put in the fire optic or whatever, they dug it.
Yeah.
Well, it doesn't even drain in front of my house. It just sits there, so when it backflows.
I know they did some ditch work with the east side or west, east side of County Road fourteen when they were doing some of the millen overlay, millen overlay. But I can touch base with them again on that, that west side. I have not heard.
Cause that might help a little bit, too.
Yeah, part of it is just with all the construction work that's gone in there and lack of maintenance in that ditch, it's gotten mounted, the elevation doesn't, has shifted drastically, so it doesn't flow like it should.
Okay.
Is there a reason that you want to do block one and block two as commercial right of way, or if you're not planning on putting anything there instead of leaving a designated ag and see what it can become, or do you have plans for that here in the near future?
I don't, I don't. Honestly, it's at the recommendation of, you know, what the, what the future of Hundredth Avenue could look like. So I'm not, I, I don't have any, any plans right now for it, honestly.
Yeah, I, I just get nervous whenever we do this and we have a residential neighborhood that backs commercial properties. I know it's right next to a hundred, but there's other situations similar to this. But then, that, eventually you'll build this out and your residents will buy those lots. Yeah, they should know that that's gonna be designated commercial, but most of the time they don't. They don't understand that. And then you come in with your plan for, let's say you wanna put a commercial business there, a construction business or whatever, and it's in their backyard, then it creates all the issues right of way.
Yeah, that's definitely a good point, and, and we see it both ways, honestly, because, you know, leaving it unzoned, there's uncertainty. And then when we do come in and try to zone it for something, we fight that battle. And then putting it in right, to your point, putting it in right now, it's gonna be a grass field for a while. I think that the, part of the reason why, in my opinion, I think it makes sense right now, is that you do have the Na Seth property that's immediately adjacent. And one of his concerns was being an island out in that area with a commercial building. And so that was, I know one of his, I don't wanna speak for him, but that was one of the points that they brought up early on. I mean, I, I think it's gonna be a long time before commercial makes sense there.
I mean, even, even block one for the adjacent neighborhood? I mean, that's right there, too. I mean, there's quite a bit of a buffer there, but it is right there.
Yeah, and again, we tried, we did, that's part of the reason we put that, that pond lot through there was to try to create some additional buffer that we maybe didn't necessarily have to do. But again, we're trying to do what we can to make it fit in as best as possible. There's a lot of targets we're trying to hit there between what Hundredth is gonna look like, what the adjacent neighborhoods are.
And I, and I would agree with you, at least it's designated now before the development goes in, so that people know that that's the potential for that.
Yeah.
So, but I just was curious if you were.
Yeah, it's, it's always difficult coming in and changing something after the fact when people, like if you leave it as ag right now, I think it gets to be a, you know, we're kicking the can on a battle down the road.
It would be an issue. And there's no one there right now, anyway, so.
Right.
And when the, when they do get built up, then that's when you would put in the buffers?
Yeah, if, five, ten years from now, if they were to develop.
Or maybe just stay in, because it, it'll be really hard then to readjust this to make it something else residential.
Yeah, yeah. It is three, it is three hundred feet deep. I mean, I don't see this, this is a residential area right now, and it, I don't, I don't know what would change that unless all of a sudden the county decides to turn Hundredth into a, a bypass where you start getting a lot of traffic that wraps around the city in that location.
Were there any other residents that wanted to speak? Any other questions?
I mean, it is fairly close to suburban development right now with sixty-foot wide lots and some of them a wider than that, but you do have some fifties in there and a mix.
So the idea with the, the build out on this then is, as developers, selling lots to, to general contractors who will be building houses, or?
Yeah, we.
You, you don't build houses?
We know, we won't, we won't be building the houses. We would be selling these lots to local home builders.
Any other questions? Can we close the public hearing?
Yeah, cause the buffer would have to, if the commercial went in, the buffer would go with the commercials.
All right, we're gonna close the public hearing for the future land use map amendment, the rezone and the plat. So I guess the first thing we need to act on is the future land use map amendment. And that was looking at changing, or there wasn't a designation, there was?
There is a designation suburban.
And we would need to change that to compact residential and commercial?
Compact development.
Which exceeds, I mean, he's already exceeding those lot sizes quite a bit compared to what compact is.
Right.
I assume the idea of going to compact residential is be, rather than, say, SR three, is because there's some of them that are fifty-five foot and.
You get a reduction in lot, in your setbacks, too?
Offset, too.
So there's.
So it's, it's very similar to Lost River. I mean, you did a very similar thing there, too, just more compact, but put bigger lots in.
But then they have a little bit more flexibility with their lot, too, with the smaller setbacks?
This is the amendment to the, this whole section here that doesn't include all the platted stuff. Is that pushing on things? So the stuff that's platted, is that the only part that's getting amended to the future land use, or is it more than that?
Just what's applied. Yeah, and John, I don't know if you wanna touch on future phases of this or not. I know we're a long time, but I know there is.
Well, I guess my, my, the way I was looking at this is, I anticipated that by changing the land use plan, that that did it for the hundred and, call it hundred and forty acres and nothing south of Maple Lakes.
Right.
That way, when we came in, we'd be, we'd come in and do a similar style development on multiple phases and not have to go through and update the land use plan on each of the phases as we move south. But I don't know how you had it, how you had it written out.
I mean, just the, the request itself is synonymous with the, the plat itself.
Well, that's fine, then we can, on the next phase, we'll have to.
Go through the process again?
Go through the process again. But I, it just, I just wanna get it out there. The intent is to continue with similar lot sizes as we work our way to the south. Well, you know, there's gonna be additional parks further south, additional public facilities with ponds further to the south. So I guess we'll probably have to come through it anyway, since there'd be other uses.
How many more lots do you think through all those phases?
Well, this phase is about eighty-five, eighty-two, probably around two hundred and fifty, something like that as you work your way south. The stuff to the, on the east side, south of Maple Lakes would be more in line with what Maple Lakes is, as opposed to the stuff on this side, which is slightly more dense.
So you're not thinking of four hundred homes that you said is meeting?
And to, well, and to, well, eighty-five plus two, that's three fifty-ish. I, we haven't completely laid out every, like, every lot all the way south, but if we keep a similar density, it's gonna be in that range.
Any other questions about the future land use map amendment?
I'll make a motion to change the current future land use map designation from SR three to the proposed future land use map designation of CAV for the two lots, C for two lots, and the CR for eighty-five lots?
Eighty-two, yeah.
Eighty-two, I'm sorry, it says eighty-five on here, I apologize. And John, I just wanna say, I, it's, I really appreciate the way you present this, and it is a pleasure working with a developer like you, so.
Well, I appreciate it.
Okay.
All right, a motion has been made. Is there a second? I'll second. I can do that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, the second thing we need to look at is the rezone. So right now, it's agricultural.
And you could combine those two if you.
And the plat.
And the plat, we can do that at the same time, okay. So the rezone and the plat. So right now, it's agricultural. I have to get to the next page.
So the question I have is, do we need to make any notation regarding the backside of those lots on the, on the east side of seventy?
This area?
Yeah.
In there?
Yeah. Do we need to make a recommendation on that, that, as far as how that?
Could we suggest a, a buffer of some sort and leave it up to city council to decide what that?
Well, I think you guys discussed several potential conditions that you'd have to add now as far as the recommendation for approval or denial. So any of those conditions that you have, like the, the traffic calming, signage, have the engineer look at that. And then if you want the, the multi-use path on the east side for buffering, have that. Jase can put that in his staff report as a recommended condition. And then anything else that you, I think those are.
City would require a sidewalk on both sides regardless, right?
It'll be probably shared, it'll be a shared use path on one side and then a sidewalk on the other. And if there is a, a push for it to be on the east side to create a larger right of way green space, I would include that at least as a recommendation. Our plan at our city council, based on engineering comments, may opt to remove that one, but I would fully encourage you guys to add something, any of that language on there. Same way with traffic calming, at least put a condition that the city engineering explores traffic calming measures on Seventy-Fourth Street. We can, we can add those two as recommendations into that condition. So I would just request we maintain the one about getting into the agreement with Casper Water and then whatever additional ones you would wish to add.
Cause I, I agree with you, Ron, that's, that's pretty intrusive on the back sides of those properties, but.
So just for a, a point of reference, so you guys can understand scale, that collector road should be somewhere around thirty-two to thirty-four feet wide pavement-wise. So you're, you're gonna have about thirty-two to thirty-four feet on either side from a landscaping. And I, I'm fully supportive of additional buffering, landscape buffering of some kind. I think there's some things we can do in terms of meandering the sidewalk and planting some trees along there to, to give some, some kind of enhanced aesthetic look to it and additional buffer.
Right. Now, if there's sidewalk on one side and shared use on the other side, it, is, are you indifferent on that?
You know, so if you, if you go to the next page, one of the things I was anticipating was that the path, the main walking path was gonna be, from a foot traffic standpoint, was gonna be on the west side of the road.
Okay.
Some of the things we were looking at incorporating was some offshoot trails that go around the pond and then tying into the park. So I, I kinda feel like the bike path should be on the west side with the sidewalk, which is gonna have less foot traffic on the east side. And I think that that also probably gives them more green space and buffer. But I'm certainly open to suggestions.
I mean, with, by doing that, though, would that take up more of a buffer on the west than on the east? I mean, or would they be about the equal size, so you could put more landscaping in along the east to help with some softening?
I mean, I'll, I'll defer to engineering on what they're comfortable with. I have no problem adjusting the roadway and sliding it further to the west to give some more green space to be able to do some double rows of trees or something like that. But ultimately, I know engineering, they tend to be sticklers on where the road's located, so I kinda have to, although I don't wanna change the, change the game for them, but I do think there's some things we can do with some meandering of the sidewalk and planting of some trees and cones to, to kinda give that a little more of a.
Cause it'll definitely help with traffic noise. I mean, that, that's my biggest concern is that there's gonna be a lot more traffic noise in those backyards than what they're accommodating to, so.
So I, and Lucas corrected me if I'm wrong on this, I don't know if it's something as, even going as general of a recommendation for additional plantings or additional buffering within the right of way along Seventy-Fourth. And that still allows flexibility for that pathway to be on either side. I, you could go more of a general sense.
Can we, can we word it so that, so that there is, that they're cognizant of, of additional space and, and landscape buffering applied to the east side of the, of the road?
I'm gonna look at the guy who is an Esquire.
Yeah, I don't know exactly how it would be worded, but, but so that, so that there's a consideration given to a buffer zone on that east side.
Here roughly got about thirty feet on both sides.
Right.
Jase, I'm, I'm a very visual person. Is it, are you able to pull up Google Maps and drop a pin on, on Ninth Street West, north of Fortieth Avenue before the roundabout? It's over in the Eagle Run Development, but that's a hundred-foot right of way and has a residential collector on it. And at least it'll give you kind of a visualization of what that. of what that, what that landscape buffer actually kind of looks like from how much grass it is. Because it's, there's quite a bit there.
Okay, John, Ninth Street, south north of Fortieth?
Yep.
And I got a big roundabout. Am I around?
Yeah, so just go, you could go north of, you could go south of the roundabout because then you're going to be, either way, north of the roundabout's actually better, north of the roundabout.
A lot of people like the sidewalk.
The intention of these are two roads that they will expand to more than two lanes in the future?
No, this is just simply a residential collector road. So it's not, it is just to get, get the neighborhood out of, out of the tra, um, get the traffic out of the neighborhood.
Is this what you're talking about, John?
Yeah. So you can see how, like, how much green space is actually there. I mean, that road definitely isn't in, right up in their backyards. That's what I'm talking about, meandering the path and adding some additional landscaping. You can beef up the number of trees and...
Don't have the same sidewalk guy that did the one by the school. That really curvy, make-like one?
Yeah, you see how they did that? If you go back one, go back one. Yeah. So you see how they meandered that path? They were able to get some trees on both sides of it and kind of helped add to the buffer. Then ultimately, if they want a fence back there, the, you know, the homeowners are able to...
No.
And I think the city's kind of moved to a standard take like sixty-six now is at some point when those grow, that'll be a forest, the amount of trees that they ended up putting in there. Same with the, the residential collector through Cub Creek. There's been an overabundance of trees that have been planted, so there has been kind of a cognizant effort to overplant those residential collectors to make sure that they're at some point a...
You can't overplant trees.
I want to say overplant, that's probably the wrong word, to put a large amount of trees.
Except by the high school or the middle school where they have that sidewalk that really is like...
That's along Sixty-third, yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I think you could go it from a, a general standpoint, Ron, on that of, if your motion is to approve of including a condition of ensuring additional space is remain within the right-of-way for buffering for adjacent homes or something.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, it's not a change you're going to see in the plat, but you'll see within the actual civil construction of it.
Are there like turning lanes to get off these collectors to go into these residential neighborhoods like on Hundred and Second?
Typically not within like a residential collector style. You may see a three-lane road, which you'll have the two twelve-foot travel lanes with a third lane in the middle that will act as a, a left and right, or left turn lane. Um, sixty-six is probably the best example of, of that in Horace, but, um, with the size of, of these roads and the traffic blocking, no, they're not usually set up for turn lanes on and off of them, except for a middle center turn lane.
Now, they generally are just a little bit wider pavement than a traditional neighborhood road.
I don't think the Google car has been up here. Maybe it has. Yeah, there's a center lane.
Yeah, I mean, we're some, I'm supportive of additional landscaping or whatever percentage or if you just want to be broad about it.
Any other questions?
Well, since everybody will be driving electric cars, it won't really matter. I'm, I'm a comedian too, so. Except you, you got that, you got that coda, don't you? No, I'm just kidding.
All right, who would like to make a motion?
Where is the reg plat recommendation?
Finally, make that written down.
Except you have, Jason's going to have to help.
Okay.
Okay, so the, the motion is, is to approve the, the, uh, rezone and, and plat, is that right?
Yep.
And, um, so, and we wanted to have, I guess it doesn't, we, we don't want to stipulate where the shared use is. That'll be, since it's going to differ to that, but, um, second. You had things that we wanted to do with Cass City, right?
Cass real, yeah. And you could probably start it off with move to approve the plat and rezone with conditions outlined in staff support and the additional conditions of X, Y, and Z.
Exactly. And the extra conditions would, would refer to the traffic calming, uh, efforts on Seventy-fourth Street South and, uh, consideration for, um, uh, increased landscaping or, uh, bound, boundary, um, devices on, um, the east side of Seventy-fourth, uh, and adjacent to the backs of lots in Maple Creek.
Did I everything right?
Did I cover it?
I think so. All right, motion has been stated. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's a main second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. The next item is a rezone and plat for Willow Grove Second Edition.
All right, Metta Vice Chair, members of the commission, let me just scroll through this packet here to get to Willow Grove Second Edition. So the application before you tonight for this project is for the subdivision and rezoning of approximately eighty-two point five eight acres into two hundred and forty total lots. Uh, the breakdown consists of two hundred and thirty-three, uh, compact residential, which if you'll notice, and I'll get into this shortly, but if you notice in the application, it refers to R six, R five, and public, which are all former districts of the city. Um, three urban residential lots, which were former R five and four civic, uh, which is a former public lots. Um, in addition, the plat request, the applicant's requested to rezone, uh, the eighty-two point five eight acres from its current district of Ag to CR, which in the request is R six, uh, UR, which in the request is R five, and, uh, civic, which in the request is public. Um, just note that the first phase of Willow Grove Edition was approved by the city council on March fourth of twenty twenty-four. Uh, so this application was submitted on March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, uh, prior to the adoption of the new land use ordinance on April tenth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, staff and delta, the Horace City Code four dash eight point four point B two states properties that are platted, uh, properties that are platted and identified as compact residential on the official zoning map are deemed in process prior to the adoption of the land use ordinance shall be subject to the R six setbacks of the two thousand and three land use ordinance. Um, in process is defined as an application that has been deemed as a complete application that has requested the R six zoning district classification in accordance with two thousand and three land use ordinance. It should be noted that this clause only applies to the former R six zoning district. The applicant's request for R five and public facilities will be automatically updated to directly correlating districts within the new ordinance, which is urban residential and civic. Uh, future development under those districts will be required to adhere to the conventional standards and improvement standards of the new land use ordinance. Uh, the R six district will still be reflected as compact residential on the updated zoning map. However, the only thing that would be modified in that would just be the, the setbacks that they build future homes, uh, in accordance with. Uh, lastly, it should be noted that depending on the future use within urban residential, former R five area buffering from the adjacent compact residential districts, uh, within this development and Sunset Valley to the north, uh, would be required with that. Uh, the proposed development features two hundred and thirty-three compact residential lots that range from forty feet in width, which is the, the original R six minimum, uh, to ninety-three feet in width. Uh, the development features an average lot width of fifty-six feet and an average lot size of eight thousand two hundred and twenty-eight square feet or point one eight acres. Uh, gross units per acre for the development, which again is the entire development area, is two point eight two units per acre. While the net units per acre are five point three units per acre. Um, the Horace Park District met to review the application, provide recommendation from public land dedication. The park district's requesting three point two six five acres of land dedication, which are identified in Lot Five, Block Five and Lot Fifteen, Block Six. Additionally, the park district is requesting seven hundred or seven hundred thirty-nine thousand and eight dollars and forty-seven cents, uh, in cash and lieu dedication for improvements to the park-owned property within the development. Uh, the newly, newly adopted land use ordinance once again sets out details, uh, a set of criteria for decision-makers of the city to consider before approving or denying rezoning applications. Um, while this application was submitted in two thousand and three land use ordinance, they are a good guide for everyone to review when, uh, choosing to rezone a property on that. Um, the applicant still is in talks with Southeast Cass, uh, as it's addressed into Drain Twenty-seven, and what the easement agreement looks like, similar to what Cub Creek has had to do for development along the drain. Uh, so there may result in minor tweaks depending on what the end result is through those conversations. However, as a condition of approval, we do have on this is prior to the hearing date that that app, that easement agreement shall be recorded, uh, for the area adjacent to Drain Twenty-seven. Uh, then that document number needs to be included on the plat. Prior to the hearing, the city council as well, another condition is the applicant shall enter into a development agreement with Casper Water Users District, which is pretty standard for anyone that is using Casper Water on that property. Um, with that does carry another recommendation of approval based on the comprehensive plan, the city's land use ordinance, um, and the development within the area. Um, again, the majority of lot sizes are in conformance with the new standard. There is a series of forty-foot lots, uh, as this was a part of the, the two thousand and three land use ordinance before it made its way to you guys. So I will stand or sit or stand here for any questions you guys may have on that. Um, other than that, if you have no other questions, we can proceed with the public hearing. And you can deal with the public hearing for both the plat and rezone for this project.
Any questions for Jase? Okay, we're going to open the public hearing for the rezone and plat for Willow Grove Second Edition.
Commissioners John Eunice with Eagle Ridge. Uh, just want to speak a little bit to the timeline. So we've, uh, originally came in front of you guys almost a year and a half ago, I think, with the first phase, uh, that, that included the entire master plan for the development. Uh, we went through the plating process with that first phase and subsequently we're starting the plating process with the second phase. Um, the reason it's taken a while to get to you guys is that there's a lot of, uh, a lot of design work that had to be done between, um, the first phase and the second phase. We've got a collector road that connects both phases. We have a storm, two storm sewer ponds that go to an outfall to the drain. Uh, there was a plat to the north of us that we had to make some modifications for to adjust and align with. So all that stuff just took a little bit of time, which is why it went from March eighteenth until now. Um, but ultimately, the, the development is substantially the same as what we originally brought in front of you guys, uh, with the, our original concept as well as that first phase plat, other than the minor tweaks that we had to make in order to connect the right-aways with the adjacent developments.
Any questions for you?
So we're just approving phase two today or?
Correct. So phase one was done March, or March of last, or this year, uh, that it was done. So this is, what they're proposing is phase two. Um, I don't know, John, if you want to talk to the construction timeline of this. This isn't, uh, approve phase two and all two hundred and forty lots are going in tomorrow.
Yeah, so we are about ninety percent done with the design for phase one. Uh, that includes the collector road that goes from, uh, that connects, uh, Sixty-sixth Street all the way down to Seventy-sixth Avenue. Those plans have been, um, well, we've been having bi-weekly meetings with, uh, Interstate and the city on those designs. The detention ponds have been fully designed. Um, the anticipation is that the first phase would bid in the spring right-of-way. With that construction happening in twenty twenty-five, the next phases will be constructed over subsequent years. Um, my hunch is that you see a phase get completed in twenty-five, a phase get completed in twenty-six, and then probably the final phase then, uh, in twenty twenty-seven.
Oh, you're on this page. I'm on the wrong page.
On the plat, there's, um, this green space in the middle. I see pond on the plat, but those are parks on both sides of the road or?
Yep. Yeah, so, uh, the Block Ten, Lot Fifteen is going to be a detention pond, um, and Block, uh...
There'll be, there'll be a detention pond, uh, right here and a detention pond right here. There's a lift station that has to go right here for the sanitary sewer, and then there'll be playground facilities and trail facilities that kind of connect everything, uh, through there. So again, we put the, tried to put the ponds on the, on the collector road, so it kind of has a nice, uh, look as you drive down it.
Any other questions? While they're mulling over that, is there any residents that have any comments, questions, concerns? I guess they're...
And I will say as a part of the design, one of the things that came up with the first phase was, um, on the Adelman Acres, making sure that we get storm sewer connected over there to help out with that drainage, and that is being designed into the plans right now. So just kind of a follow-through of a prior point that was made.
You know, the drainage issues like on the roads that they're having?
Yeah, along that tree road, um, there really isn't a whole lot of grading back there, so there's an inlet that's going to be brought. And eventually that flow, it's going to pick up all the, I'll call it the low flow and take it to the detention ponds in our development. I don't know if it's a silver bullet that's going to fix everything, but it'll at least help get rid of some of the water that's standing back there. And I think, I believe that the total, we actually, the lot count has dropped from the, from the master plan that was done with the first phase. I think there's seventeen less lots on this, um, on this final version of the phase two.
There's a, again, this is going to be developers buying this property or builders buying?
This is, this one is owned, this one is owned by, uh, by a builder, and we're, we're assisting on the development side.
And, and, um, what's the plan for, all of these lots that are under the, the old rules at forty feet, uh, there's large blocks of them. Is there going to be any effort in that to, during the construction phases to mix it up a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, there's a few developments that we've done for this builder, and they, I will say, of, of all the builders, they're the most cognizant of what, what a streetscape looks like. Um, they adjust driveways to make sure that there's room for on-street parking, uh, to line up from that perspective, and they vary their elevations on every single plan.
You know, because with a, a single builder, they've only got so many, so many designs that fit on a forty-foot lot, but...
See, and I, I don't have a real big issue with the continuation of your lots, um, on the, uh, down by on Sixty-first South, Block Twelve, right in there, yeah. I don't have an issue with continuing those lots the same since that was all laid out that way originally and continuing that up on that side of that road. But when you get to, um, the other side, when you're on one through twelve and one through fourteen, um, on Sixty-first Street, I, I, I personally like to see those lots go back to what, uh, the city had intended with the forty-five. to what the city intended with the 45-foot wide lots. I mean, and then you also have some of the 40-foot lots up on 8, or 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, and 24, 25, roughly. You might lose a lot in there, but you should be able to pick up that width of those lots by doing that. Because essentially, when I look at this, that whole area becomes its own entity and should go back to, or should go to the way that the new ordinance is.
And then part of the challenge with the, with the new ordinance is the side yard setback and what that does for the building plans that actually fit on them. So I think it's, has a much bigger impact than necessarily just making them 45 feet wide.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but we're not talking, I mean, we're talking also a whole nother, other area of development compared to what's already been developed. There are two different sides of the street here on... It just would be nice to start enforcing what we set out to do in the first place with this new ordinance.
Side yard 60, 61, 50, anything.
What street is that?
Cup Creek Way.
Yeah.
That's Cup Creek Way.
Yeah, so, and that would be on the north side of Cup Creek, is that correct?
This is...
South, north.
Am I backwards?
It runs from north or south, northwest to southeast, so...
I can see finishing the rest of that area out on Cup Creek Way, the way it was intended, and then it goes back to what the ordinance is.
Hey Commissioner, what are you talking, back to the way the ordinance is? Are you talking?
To the new ordinance.
Right, but are you talking?
Lot width and setbacks?
Yes. Both, or just are you referring to lot width in general?
How much deeper would the lots become if they were with the setback?
To, again, about four feet on each side that you'd have to do. So from 40, at a 45-foot lot, minus 14, you know, 30, not good at math, 31 foot.
Lots along, all of the, the lots along Cup Creek Way are larger lots, 60?
Correct, yeah. As this development transitions back towards Drain 27, the lots increase significantly on that.
So the offset or the setbacks on the side of the lots wouldn't be, I mean, there would be room for that.
Well, it, it actually, it, we went through the exercise of looking at, at the impact of the, of the new zoning ordinance on these lots, and it's, it's drastic. It's not as though, it, what it ends up doing is it ends up reducing the size of house and value of house that can be put on each one of the lots, or in essence, the lots have to get bigger and drastically reduces the overall lot count. And that's part of, again, I think that the challenge is we, you know, it just took some time to work through the, all the design constraints with the site and lining things up with the adjacent developments. What I would say is I think that I can, I can get some support from the, from the owner if we are talking about removing a lot or two, but I know that the zoning ordinance has a, I mean, it has a drastically different impact than the loss of just a single lot or two on, on one side of the street.
Would it be allowed to keep the setbacks under the old ordinance, letting?
So realistically, if, if you approve this development because it was submitted prior to, it would fall under the clause that subjects it to the former setbacks. So that's where my question is coming, is is this a setback issue or a lot width issue? Because I think lot width can be worked through, but setbacks, if it is approved as it was submitted, we are subject under the, called the bailout clause for R6 that would hold it to.
And I know council's intent was to make the lots bigger so that the side yard setbacks were different, correct?
They increased the lot width to increase the side yard setback and create just a further visual separation between the two.
Correct. I mean, that was, that was their main issue when we went through the new...
Correct.
Right.
But I'm saying, in this case scenario, like if, if with it being submitted before, if it is approved, regardless of whether we 100% love it of being under that, those setbacks or not, like that's the clause it falls under. So there might be room to play with the lot widths and at least get some lot width similar to the new ordinance, but the setbacks would still reign supreme from the 2003 land use ordinance. You guys did it with Willow Grove First, breaking, breaking up the 40-feet with some 45s.
Yeah.
And that's just, I want to put that out there as...
And I think, I think we can, I think we can specifically on, on 61st Street, I think there's some flexibility in, in, in all this line of 40-foot lots. I think that we can get some 50-footers in there or something like that to break it up. I think I can definitely get some support on that. The setbacks are honestly, it has, it has a really big impact on which homes can be built on which lot.
Right, but if it's, if it's a 45-foot lot and it, and it balances, I mean, your side yard setbacks, it shouldn't affect that, that much that it would affect your house size. Because we're, because we're changing that by, God, two feet anyway.
Yeah, well, yeah, two feet, 45.
The bigger, the bigger lots are the, are the, are a bigger problem. On a 60-foot wide lot with those setbacks, you just can't fit as nice of a house on it, on it with, with those larger setbacks, and I think that's a bigger, that's a bigger concern.
I understand that.
I think just by varying the lot sizes, the type of house is going to vary too.
Correct.
You know what I mean? So I think that just by varying the lot sizes and the setbacks, we'll get to where we want to be.
The setbacks are less of a, a problem to me than six or seven 40-foot lots strung in a row.
Yeah, me too.
That, that...
So it, it would also, you know, probably take 20 through 25 on the, on 60th Street South also. I mean, because there's room, I mean, you get rid of one lot, it, it gives you a little bit more room to play with some width. Just, we really want to try and get away from those 40-foot wide lots. I understand what you're doing on the other side of Cup Creek because it, backyards match. That I'm a little bit more comfortable with, but when you get to the, I mean, it almost becomes its own development over there then.
So is that, oh, it's going to be the popular thing to say, but I'm going to say it. Is that something you guys would like to see prior to making a recommendation on this application?
I would, because I'd like to know that your builder's on board with that.
Yeah, before we approved the plat.
Well, if, if you, if they made a recommendation, sorry, I apologize, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, that's okay.
But if they made a recommendation that stated to add very, like, a recommendation with approval stipulating that there are lot variability with the goal of increase, not just having 40-foot wide lots on, I'll call it 61st and 60th Street, is that, with that kind of motion, I mean, if, ultimately, if he decides that he can't, that he can't make that adjustment and decides to go with a non-approved recommendation, I'm assuming we have to come back if we're, if we don't make that adjustment?
So ultimately, it's up to the commission how they want to do that. If they feel more comfortable making a, a recommendation and actually visualizing what that looks like, that ultimately is going to fall on to...
I don't need to visualize it, I just need to know that, you know, it's not going to all be the same, you know, 40s. So, I mean, I, I, so I, we could make it as a condition of approval, and as long as he makes the modification, I, I wouldn't have a problem.
And it'll also be up to you guys how you want, there's a lot of ways to decide how to do that. I know in the past, we've, we've wanted to see the visual of it, and sometimes we have.
Would he be, would you be able to make the modification within the time that it's going to be forwarded to City Council?
It would have to be done before City Council. So what I ultimately would do, if you went that route of not necessarily an approval, it would be a conditional recommendation of approval.
Okay.
Pending the ability to add a variation of lot sizes along specific streets. And if he's not able to do that, it would be back in front of you guys to formulate. I don't know, Lucas, if that sounds legally enough?
And then we'd see it either way, right?
You can do that also.
Yeah, and I'd like to see it come back with the, with the variation in lot sizes and get rid of the 40-foot wide lots, or 40-foot wide lots and get, get some variation in the, in those 45-footers in there. I understand you'd like to get this approved, but realistically, this probably is going to start till spring?
Oh, yeah, this phase is not getting built, won't be getting built in 2025.
Right, so...
My only concern is the, the longer it goes, it's taking a long time to just get here, and the longer it goes to get in front of City Commission, the further it seems like we're down the road and, and less recognition of when this will actually happen. That's my, that's my ultimate concern.
But you understand, we don't want to approve something we haven't seen.
Yep, yep, I get that, and I know that, let's just say you have 40 feet to work with. It's like on the first phase, we added, we added a bunch of, there were 45-foot wide lots and 40-foot wide lots all along that same street that we were able to add a variation in there. And we certainly would be able to do the same thing. And, you know, 40 feet, we'd be able to add, on eight feet, eight of the lots, we'd be able to make 45. So over half of them on each side of the street would be 45-foot wide lots, you know? Or maybe four of them become 50-foot wide lots.
Right, right, yeah. But I would like to see it prior to approving it, just to make sure that who you're working with is okay with that, because I've seen it go both ways, so...
Do you want to make a motion?
Do we, and we already addressed, there's no one from the public here, right?
Or, we don't have to close it, right? Should we leave it open and table it?
I guess they leave it open if they're going to, if they do choose to table it.
It's up to you guys, if you want to take more public comment, you can, unless you can close the public hearing, because I feel like everyone has had that opportunity.
Look, can I ask a, just a kind of formality question? Is it, oh, does the public hearing reopen back up at the next meeting?
Well, that's what we're talking about now, is if they want, if they want to do that.
And if they closed it, they would be able to reopen it via motion to, to do it, but if they, either way.
We can probably leave it open.
We could leave the public hearing open.
We'll leave it open, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, we can leave the public hearing open. So I, I would like to make a motion to leave the public hearing open and table this so that we can, can go back and look at getting rid of those 40-foot wide lots, change them to 45, and then we can relook at this as far as how that, how that looks and with setbacks, so...
So on...
But that would be along 61st Street and 60th Street, because those are the only areas that are in concern because everything along 61st Street on the backside of Cup Creek, that's already established that way, but I'd like to table it.
The motions are made, is there any discussion?
Yes, I have a discussion. You're, you're asking him to change all of them to 45s, or a portion of them, or what, what, what are you, what are you asking?
That all the 40-foot wide lots are changed to the minimum of 45 for basically along 1 through 14, 12 through, or 1 through 12 on 61st, on the, 20, 19 through 25 on 60th, and then everything that is on basically the south, I believe the south side of Cup Creek.
Yeah, so you're looking at...
They're going to be in the same.
The north side isn't up for approval tonight, though, right?
What's that?
The stuff that's on the north side isn't up for approval?
Yes, the whole.
The whole thing.
So actually, it's, it's like this.
So you'd be looking at Block 1, Block 12, and that's it. Portions of Block 1 and Block 12 along 61st.
So we're looking at that right here.
That's correct. So all, all of them from 40s to 45s, okay?
But they're leaving these at 40, since these already match up before.
Okay. Do you have an idea of how many lots he, they would lose in the development doing that? Is it, we don't know. So these are all 40s?
So now we're doing just Phase 2, or we're doing actually the Phase 3?
We're just doing Phase 2.
So?
But Phase 2 doesn't...
So it actually fits like this.
So this stuff up here is Phase 3.
So the, the difference between phases and additions in this case? So Commissioners eats, if I may, the, so the difference is phase, phases versus additions. So you're approving the second addition, which is the entirety of the plat. They've just proposed to break it down into phases for construction purposes. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, I, I, I'm having just a little, the numbers are a little small, so...
Sorry, time's too hard.
I understand that just, I understand what you guys are going for and, and...
Okay.
There, does that help you?
Well, we wanted to get approval, I can, I respect your guys' decision. We'll take a look at it, make whatever adjustments. What I will say is it's, you know, the math isn't always clean on it because it's, they're not in even increments, so we'll, we'll, we'll take a stab at it and come back with something.
Yeah.
Their next meeting is November 12th. Timing standpoint.
So we have a motion on the table to, on the floor, I guess, to table this?
Oh, second motion.
Oh, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries. So November 12th, we will look at it again.
Thank you.
Are there any other discussion items or announcements?
No, the only thing that I would add, we are working on some workshop items for the city council, especially when it comes to development, infrastructure, bonding stuff. In my head, I'm thinking it may not be a bad idea to kind of have kind of an informal workshop at our next meeting with the planning zoning question, just to kind of talk about some areas of concern, especially through the comp plan development and anything like that, as we are starting to kind of work through, and I think some of those items are picking up in conversation. So trying to maybe get your guys' opinion too, that I can include in my presentation that I'll end up doing at the city council. So just, I guess, be thinking over the next couple of weeks of some items, and then following this item, because I believe this will be the only one on the agenda next week, that we'll probably have that discussion for half an hour, hour on that. So that's all I have on this. I don't know, Lucas, if you have anything from the legal world, no?
And I had met with Stan Tech over the comp plan with a, and then they sent me the survey results from 2018.
So, yeah, so I have, so we're working on getting the, the entire archive file, just because through the comp plan development, you go in phases of your public engagement, and a survey is, is one item, and it definitely should be paid attention to, but they typically use those results to then build the next phase of the, the policy and the creations. I, I don't have that information of what happened between point A and point Z. We just know the result between point A and point Z. So that's, trying to figure that out, so that is in the works, getting sent over to work through as well. But just put that out there, it's, it's in progress, trying to figure that out.
Yeah, my, my impression from the survey was that, you know, the, the high density was not something, I mean, people really hated high density, and, and somehow we ended up with, you know...
And our part is you go through some of the survey, you go with result by result, there are people that, you know, were looking for affordability in the community, and how does that translate into density, and how does that translate into the acre lots? And that's something that the city's got to account for too, is there are, are multiple voices in the community that we have to look for. Now, is this the, was this the correct result that it ended up in? I, I can't answer that. It's just something that we're going to have to take a look at moving forward, so...
All right, anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Leaving it adjourned.